Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Laredo College District Board of McIntosh Campus. Today is Monday, July twenty fifth to twenty twenty two. It is five thirty five P M and we call this meeting to order. This is the Finance and Audit Committee meeting. Uh coins ahead and call row. Stavon Rangel.
President.
Uh Tita Bella.
President.
Merculli Martinez, absent, and Jorge Delgado, present. We will move on to agenda item number three, which is the June twenty twenty two financial report. Mr. Cesar Vela. By the way, welcome back. Trying not to go on vacation.
Good afternoon, uh members of the board, Dr. Ramirez, uh for the record, Cesar Vela, Vice President of Finance. Um included with the board materials, you received the copy of the twenty twenty two finance, uh June twenty twenty two financial report. Uh I'll briefly go over the highlights for uh the report. Uh general operating revenues as of June thirtieth are sixty eight million, six hundred five thousand one hundred and six. Uh that's a hundred eleven percent of our budget revenue. Uh an item to note here is that we have recorded the amount that is uh going to be charged to the higher education emergency refunds. And these were the incentives that we offered for fall and spring semester this year. Uh those totals uh into uh the total was six million, seven hundred seventy three thousand, six hundred fifty eight. So again, we have projected four point two uh with the extent uh the incentive to include continuing that courses also. Uh so again, uh those courses were were included as part of the incentive that we offered. Now, we are pending to uh issue uh two payments that actually will be going out at the end of the month. Uh and that is the uh payment for the uh the contractual or the maintenance tax note. Uh I'm sorry, the maintenance tax notes. Uh so we got a uh two point eight million payment that will be going out. And also a four point one payment on the revenue bonds. So again, right now, uh we're showing uh six point eight million of excess revenue. Uh we will be reducing that by the four point one million and the two point eight million uh payments that will be going out for the maintenance and revenue bonds. At the end of the month. Uh as far as the state appropriations, we've collected eighty one percent of the the amount that was appropriated by the state. So out of the eleven point two million, we have collected or received nine point one million. Uh we're planning to receive two point one and again, no. Uh no surprises there yet from the state or anything. So we're expecting to receive the two point one. Um from tax collections, uh as you can see, our collections are for uh through June thirty or thirty nine million, two hundred twenty nine thousand five ninety nine. That's ninety nine point three percent of the amount that we budgeted. So we budgeted a ninety nine percent collection rate. Uh so we have two hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars left uh to to collect uh based on our protections or we will be exceeding that amount. Uh for the year. Uh again, our revenue is sixty eight point six million. Uh again, we do have a couple of payments, uh like I mentioned, that still need to be accounted for. Uh any questions when it comes to the revenues at this point? And one last thing to note is, I'm sorry, uh on the local funds, uh we do have to account for the adjustments that we need to make for the summer session one and two. So you'll see there's some aspects there on uh the tuition and fee revenue. Uh we do need to make those adjustments and those will be made uh if this coming month. Uh to reflect the the tuition uh for the dual program. Uh for expenditures, uh the expenses uh as of June thirty eighth are forty five million, four hundred thirty four thousand, four hundred forty seven. That represents seventy three point sixty three percent of our uh uh budget. Um we do have about nine, nine point uh three million still uh to go to close out the fiscal year. So again, when we look at the projections, uh we are protecting the to have around four and a half to five million in savings uh this year. Uh again, uh we have already committed some of those savings to purchase equipment for next fiscal year. Uh in addition, uh with the approval of the uh HVAC project also of the Martinez My Art Center, we'll we'll be taking into account those savings for that project. Uh again, no major variances to report on the expenses. Uh any questions on any other particular items?
Sure.
Yeah. Uh as far as the uh other funds, the uh E D C, uh which is the uh special appropriation that we get from the uh state uh for the Economic Development Center. Uh we had a budget of two hundred and six thousand, one sixty four. Uh the actual revenues are five hundred five thousand, four forty three. Uh and this uh the increase is attributed to the uh Laredo Care Stack two point zero. Some of the trainings were conducted through the Economic Development Center, so uh the revenue that uh was attributed to their uh. To those courses has been accredited to the uh to this particular fund. Uh expenses for the year, a hundred fifty three thousand, four hundred seventy seven. Uh above seventy four point four percent of our budget. Uh so right now, we do see a uh increase uh to the fund balance for this uh particular fund of two hundred fifty one thousand, one hundred sixty six.
May I ask a question?
Uh yes, Chair recognizes Dr. Ramirez.
Uh so is it fair to say that the E D C is now self sustaining and can be, we no longer have to sustain that through the regular budget? Uh the college budget?
Uh right now for this year, yes, uh again, but uh this is at one time, okay, we're using per funding. Uh we uh bought the senior royal and the college contributed a billion dollars to this endeavor. Uh so portion of those trainings include E D C now. This is again using per funding. Uh the state appropriation right now, and again, this is a right, uh we are working on the L A R, and part of the request will be for this. For the for the center, for the operations of the center. Uh but the appropriation for this particular program, this uh let me give you the number. Two hundred forty one thousand, one hundred sixty four. And if you see.
Can you repeat that again, Mr. Ramirez?
Hundred, under a hundred forty one thousand, one sixty four. And if you look at the year-to-date expenses of one fifty three, four seventy seven, uh right now, they're not covering your expenditures uh just with the appropriation. So obviously, that additional revenue through the operations is important.
Uh question, another question, sorry. What are we going to do if at any given time? The state legislature chooses not to fund us as a spec- because it's a special item technically, right? And if i- if at any given time they choose not to not to fund special items, would that mean that the E D C would have to close? Because there is no reserve there for that?
Uh well, that that's a good question. That's something that we're gonna have to review. Uh again, when we look at the fund balance for this particular uh program. Uh it has been going down. Uh in twenty twenty, they had seventy two thousand in reserve. Uh last year, they had twenty eight thousand. So last year, actually, they used forty three thousand, eight hundred sixty eight from the fund balance to to be able to operate. Uh so the fund balance at the start of this fiscal year was twenty eight thousand, three hundred four now. With the actions uh through the Laredo Care Stack, if again, they'll they'll be replenishing that fund balance. But that's something that we need to look at because again, the state appropriation money that's coming in is not sufficient to cover the uh up of the expenses for the for the center. Uh and again, a little bit, the majority of those expenditures are are salaries and benefits when it comes to. Right. So it's important again, it's important also on on the programming uh to see what additional revenue can come in to support the operation. But again, what what we see right now with the current revenue that has come into the curve. Uh again, at least for this next coming fiscal year, they'll have enough in reserve in case that the appropriation doesn't cover the expenditures. Uh what we've seen in the past, when we've gone up or uh when uh we've had a uh a funding year. Uh the costs have been to the special appropriation. So they have been briefly cutting that appropriation down. Uh at some point, uh we were getting up to two hundred and fifty thousand, put it down to a hundred and forty one.
That's it's gonna continue doing that. Yeah.
Is there anything long term that we can do to either combine or somehow do something with the city or the county through their E D Cs? That we can keep in, even ten U maybe to keep it going or? And just like Dr. Ramirez brought it up, in the event that the state legislature decides. Yeah. Goodbye.
Yeah.
Yeah, it could it could be again, working uh again with the city and county, but through continuing ahead and some of the uh. Private entities out there uh to try to maybe work out uh.
Training.
Trainings.
Training.
That would benefit the industry, the local industry. Uh but uh again, there's there may be, again, when it comes to the trainings. Uh we gotta look at that, like the remit, the duplication, uh obviously, we have continued net and offered all services.
That's right.
Uh and in some instances, uh even though they may be coming through the E D C, some of those trainings may may be done by. Uh or they may be done by the uh continuing ed department.
Yeah.
So so again, that's something.
They should be. Yeah, I think that's the thing. They should be done by continuing it and not external external sources.
Absolutely. And so what was the difference between twenty twenty and twenty twenty one and now twenty two besides the her funding that was provided that has replenished the?
So far, right now, it's just the curve training, the Laredo, the Laredo cares. Then if we look at that one particular item, uh when we talk about. When we talk about the revenue that has been generated through this program, we're looking at two hundred seventy three thousand five hundred.
How much?
Three seventy three, five hundred. Now, they've done uh additional trainings or or conferences. Uh and that has generated seventy thousand, six hundred uh for the center. Uh they had projected or they budgeted as part of their operations that they would be generating about twenty five thousand on those on those strings. So again, the one item that helped this year has been the curve funding through the Laredo care.
That's what this has sustained, this COVID thing.
So so that that again has given that additional uh revenue stream for this year. That again, has replenished that fund balance for, in case next year we have that situation. Uh on um the other item, the auxiliary services, uh again, a a little bit of a projected budgets of one point two million. Uh the revenue that has come in is a million, four forty eight, twenty nine, uh and expenses of six hundred ninety thousand, six eighty four. So again, right now, uh through June thirty, we're we're seeing a a net fund, net change to the fund balance of seven hundred fifty eight thousand one hundred. Uh and again, those those items include the services, the bookstore, uh which are the two uh line items or the two operations right now that are bringing in the revenue. Uh cafeteria operation, that's an item that we're looking at right now. Uh but that one currently is not bringing us uh any revenue right now. Uh the importance right now, as we've been working with that uh whole service, it is to have the services available for students to have. Uh restricted funds, the revenue is forty one million, four hundred forty eight thousand, four twenty four, expenses of forty one million, four eighty eight, four twenty four. Uh when we look at the federal funding, the majority of that is is again, is coming from federal funds, uh thirty eight million, six hundred forty four thousand, six seventy one over the forty one are federal funds. Uh again, the big bulk of it is bail funding, uh which is uh for the year, those sixteen million, one thirty two, two uh and seventeen, I'm sorry, sixteen million, hundred thirty two thousand, seventeen dollars. Uh we do still have funding available from curve. Um right now, uh we're down to approximately the the last uh two point four, point five million. Um we do have a proposal that we're working on that is uh to utilize uh a a least of approximately two million of that. For student uh aid.
Mm-hmm, sure. Chair recognizes this gentleman on hand.
Yeah, real quick, Mr. Vela, um and I know that you you had two options, which was paying off debt or helping with tuition fees. Uh are we still gonna do both?
Uh actually, Mr. Vela, we're looking at a different option at this point.
Which is?
Uh which is to provide a meal plans for students.
Okay.
Uh and we're looking right now of us trying to do a meal plan of three hundred dollars per student.
Okay.
With an additional hundred dollars per student for to be used either at the bookstore or at the cafe.
That's very good. And I know Dr. Ramirez had mentioned that, and I think that's a really good idea to kind of like entice kids to, or kids or or students to come back to campus. And to be able to keep them here and retain them here instead of having to go out there and and and, you know, go get something to eat. They could probably do it at our case and center, but we're gonna have to revamp our case and center with with food as well, you know. But um my question on that is um, how are we gonna do it? I I I think Dr. Ramirez had mentioned, you know, how we're gonna be able to do it. Are we gonna be tracking? Are we gonna load a certain debit card or what are we gonna do?
Yeah, so so one of the options, and and this is something that we currently don't have, but it's something that we're we're are going to be exploring is having an I D system. Where you we can actually load the funds to the I D uh to get to that I D and then limit the use of those funds here on campus.
Yes, that I I think if we're gonna do that, I think we have to limit it to the campus a hundred percent. Yeah, yeah, that's the only way it's gonna work. That's the only way that we're gonna be able to keep that money here and generate at least some type of revenue within within us. Um but then, as the, so then the people will be able, I guess, the cafeteria part would be able to to use a certain system that that the kids could be able to use, am I correct?
Yes, we we we'll need to set that up. Uh again, our I D system, they will need to be able to be to uh utilize that for payment purposes now. As far as the the software, the equipment, we're we're looking at uh to see what would be available. Uh so that we can use, our students can use, and also the cafeteria operator can use.
Okay, and then, I'm sorry, a- and then um, so you're, we're planning on spending two million on that?
Yes.
Okay, so then um, being that we still have some some monies that's over from 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 her. Um can we, are we gonna look at the at those other options that we looked at? Which is either paying off debt or helping for passes, or do we want to just, you know, hold back and see, you know, how this works? Or I don't know, what what's your opinion on that?
Well, Mr. Vela, when we look at at the balances that are left, uh it wouldn't be enough to offer another incentive.
Okay.
Uh and as a matter of fact, that even if we looked at the option of uh the paying off the debt of some of the students, it it it's also may not be an option at this point now. Uh we are looking at the available funds that will be once we we do this program. Is acquire software that uh will uh help us improve in the student services area. So so we do have an allocation to to move uh and and look at a software.
And we're allowed to use that money for that.
Yes.
Okay. And and I I'm sorry, Mr. Vela, and I know we have a timeframe. Whoa, by when do we have to finish this?
Uh this would be for May of uh, well, the exact date, I believe it's May twenty three, yeah, twenty twenty, twenty, whatever, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three.
Twenty twenty three.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we got a um a little bit less than a year to go.
Yes, all right. So uh right now, as we're working to the panel for the incentive, which, again, we do wanna make sure we we do this correctly, obviously. So we would have enough time again to get something either hopefully in the fall or if not possibly the spring semester, the start of the spring semester. Again, spring ends, uh spring semester would be ending right around the time that this grant would would end.
Okay, so then, and then last question is, the system that you're talking about, it's a really good idea. I think we need to revamp the, you know, our our system, but hopefully, um you know, um we get feedback from. From from staff to see what system is out there that they would feel comfortable, that, you know, works for them, you know. And I'm and and I'm thinking it would have to be the the, I guess, the several departments that are gonna be working with that system. And and figure out what system best fits them, you know, to be able to to help them. It would be a really good idea. That's really good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vela.
Please continue, Mr. Vela.
Yes, uh so the next item is just the update on the balance for the facilities master plan three. Um so June thirtieth, the balance is nineteen million, two hundred sixty two thousand, five hundred ninety five. Uh again, uh we have some uh projects that are ongoing and have just started, and and that is the uh. Uh truck driving pad at the south campus. Uh again, we have already received some of those uh invoices. Uh the board approved a couple of projects, which was the uh fiber infrastructure project. You'll start seeing activity for that project as well as the uh upgrading of the audio visual equipment at the south campus. So when we look at the uh remaining balance, uh it has been allocated uh for all the projects, all the pending projects. Uh we are planning to get a G max for the Lamar Bruny Verlada Environmental Center project. Uh and uh according to information that we received from the architect, we should be getting finalized the documents, at least a ninety five percent complete documents. Uh and we're expecting by September, we'll have something uh available for the board to consider.
Chair recognizes Mr. Vela.
Last pending question on that, like I know, if it if it does, if it does work, uh that money that we wanna give kids or students. Uh, that money that we wanna give kids or students, um. I'm just wondering how we're gonna be able to continue that if we would, if it does. Yeah, I mean, it would just be interesting, you know, if it does work. To 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 see how we could be able to maybe not as much, you know, in the future, but maybe something. You know, cuz I'm thinking there is a lot of kids that I do feel. Um, are in 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 the community that come from very humble beginnings. They probably, you know, they're used to having breakfast, having lunch in campus. So they they, you know, I think, you know, they a lot of them do need them. Yes.
So one of the, one of the ideas we have is that if this works. We, I believe, and along with Dr. These, is that this is a program that we might be able to get endowed. Long term by a donor who is who may be serious or who is very serious about. Food insecurities. And and if we can do that and and have an endowment for that, that people can actually give money to. Um, then we use the interest of that endowment. Long term to try to support, to sustain a program like that and and I mean, we. That's obviously thinking long term. Um, ideally, we would like to do this fall and spring. I don't know that we're gonna have enough money to do it both semesters. For right now, we know we have money for the fall. Um, and again, it's just gonna depend on the utilization of the students and the and the support that. That, you know, we're able to give students, hopefully, they use it. It it's, I know I know that Mr. Vella has been working currently with the vendors we have, and we're looking at additional vendors. To try to see how we can make that available, um. We got a report this morning from from an external entity that. We we asked to come in, we didn't pay them anything, we asked to come in to give a to do like an internal audit of students. Activities, enrollment management, student success initiatives. And students did make a comment about, there's no place to eat on campus and gas is expensive. And so it's really hard to just stay there during the day, and I work there, but I have to go off campus to eat. And so there's, and and so how do we make ourselves? The engine for not just a place to learn, but a place to live, right? And 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 I don't mean residential, but I mean, the whole idea of living and learning at the same place.
Uh, thank you, uh, Dr. Ramirez, and have we, and I'm not sure, have we sent out like a survey? To students and staff as well to see what foods they would like to to have? And and I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, I mean, I don't know if it would be worth it to 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 send out a survey via email. And allow them to answer, I mean, again, you're you're right, you know, gas is really expensive for 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 students. And I'm thinking even staff, so if they could stay here and eat, you know, I think it'll help.
So the short answer is no, um, but it's not like the college has had many options about vendors wanting to. Support when there's nobody here.
Exactly.
So we we're really looking at, um, and Mr. Vella's met with a couple of people. To try to figure out what would it cost to bring in, you know, a full service, uh, food service program. And and what it would take for us to budget for something like that, because the way you build that. Uh, really, and how most college campuses build that is at, you know, the first few years. You pay for it, right? And so until your your student body and your employees become so codependent on it. That it starts to sustain itself and and eventually it does. Um, but, you know, it it's, um, it it's, yeah.
You know, it, you know, I guess, once we start, you know. Putting in everything in place, you know, maybe hopefully we start seeing life again in campus. And 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 maybe, you know, at that point, we could probably ask what they would want. And then, of course, students and staff, because I'm thinking, you know, staff is here, you know, eight hours a day minimum. So must have some staff and, you know, try to see.
Well, the idea is 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 we start to hopefully start to shift the enrollment from. Uh, a sixty forty. Dual credit sixty, regular student forty, as we start to see that shift. As we increase enrollment and that percentage starts to change, and we start to have a more traditional campus. Life, whether it's, uh, whether it's through the vocational program, the technical program, continuing program, or the regular program. Either way, the idea is how do we shift that enrollment, right, to to try to generate more student fees? More student fees and more activity on campus.
You know, in the past, we have had quite a bit of vendors and very good vendors. But they've left because it wasn't cost effective for them. And, um, I think it's a really good idea giving them the students money. We have had many, many surveys, in fact. I've been involved in surveys and on bringing people in. When was that that we did that? Does anybody remember? It was several years ago that we, right? And I I know we were two or three board members that were involved in it, where they brought in food and, you know, we kind of decided what. Food user, uh, but it's just is not cost effective. That's the bottom line. We just need to bring them in, entice them, and that would be a perfect way to entice them.
It's like Dr. Ramirez says, um. For the first couple of years, we're gonna have to dish out that 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 cost. And it's until it sustained itself where it's going to be a wash, you know, and 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 we'll be fine. I mean, we might not make some money, but at least we have the amenities, like you say. That we have kids or staff that is not having to leave and is very, it it's a lot easier to just. Go real quick and grab a taco, grab a burger, or whatever it might be, a salad, you know, and it'll be a lot easier for them.
Right, it's the same, it's the same concept as as when Enmetro started coming out here and and going out to the university. And we we had to pay for that service at the beginning and now, now it pays itself, right? So i- it's the same concept, um, we build it and they will come. Um, and so that's my field of dreams.
Uh, it's just having to put the effort and time.
Yeah, and 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 we'll we'll get there.
Mr. Vella, you may continue.
Yes, thank you. Uh, the next item is just the update on the tax collection. So June thirty, collections are thirty nine million two hundred twenty nine thousand five hundred ninety nine. And represents ninety eight point thirty five percent of our tax revenue. Uh, again, we budgeted to collect ninety nine percent, uh, we're going to hit that mark this fiscal year. Uh, we're projecting that the, uh, the remaining balance of six hundred fifty eight will at least collect, uh, half of that. Uh, the last two months, so again, uh, we will be hitting a ninety nine percent collection.
Very good.
Uh, the last item is just an update on the fund balance. Uh, again, we began the fund balance with a negative, uh, two million and a half, and again, this is attributed to a viability that we have to record. Uh, revenues of sixty eight point six million, um, like I mentioned earlier, uh. The reason that we are seeing increases that we had projected that we were going to, uh. Use about four point two out of the her funding and actually came in at six point seven and and also the sixty eight is still not reflecting those payments. For the maintenance tax note and the revenue bond, uh, payment. Uh, expenditures are at forty five million, uh. We are projecting that about another nine million, uh, for the last two months of operation will be recorded. Uh, and then the two point four million, uh, reduction that you see is is the twenty percent, uh. Of last year's savings that is going to the deferred maintenance projects. Uh, so right now, the net change to the fund balance is twenty million seven hundred fifty nine thousand eight oh five. Uh, again, there will be a couple of transactions before we close out the fiscal year, which includes. Uh, the adjustment for that pension liability and the, uh. Uh, open liability that we have to record in the other fiscal year, and we should be getting those numbers in, uh, within this next month. Uh, we get the information from TRS, PERS. Uh, any questions on the front end?
No, sir.
So that concludes the, uh, financial update, uh, for this one.
All right, any questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Vella. We'll move on to agenda item number four, which is the May twenty twenty two quarterly report, Mr. Vella.
Yes, uh, the next item is the May thirty, twenty twenty two report, uh, investment report. Uh, this is an item that will be required to be approved by the board, uh, at this Thursday's board meeting. Uh, so for the month or for the quarter ended May thirty, our 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 investments and deposits. Are a hundred twenty two million ninety four thousand thirty eight dollars. Uh, a hundred three million two ninety one, six eighteen are currently in our bank depository. Uh, and we do have, uh, investments in, uh, investment pools of eighteen million eight hundred two thousand, eight hundred two. Thousand four hundred twenty. Uh, the current yields, uh, back in May, uh, our money market account was yielding, uh, sixty five basis points. Uh, we did see an increase, uh, in both, uh, investment pools, uh, we saw them going from thirty basis points to eighty two basis points. Uh, and sixty two basis points, uh, just to give you an update on what the interest rates are doing, uh, I did confirm this afternoon with our bank. Uh, and so for the, uh, July report, we will see, uh. Our, uh, interest rate for the bank deposits be at, uh, one point sixty six percent. Uh, I'm sorry, that that's, uh, uh, yes, it's of July. Uh, but I have done an update for the month of August, so if we were to close the month today. That rate would go up to two point five percent. So interest rates are going up, uh, when it comes to, uh, on the investment side. Also, we, uh, this afternoon, uh, we closed out, uh, on a US, uh, Treasury bill. Uh, we were, we are going to be depositing the endowment fund, uh, or or purchasing an investment, uh, a T bill. Uh, and it's a one year, and it is currently yielding, and that investment is gonna yield us three point zero three percent. So obviously, try to maximize the endowment fund. It is a secured investment, it is backed by the federal government, it's a US, uh, Treasury bill. Again, yielding three point zero three percent. Um, so again, we'll see those, th- this interest rates go up in the next, uh, reports. Uh, again, the, uh, bank deposit rates are tied to the thirteen week T bill. So again, right now, the thirteen week T bill is at two point five five percent, uh, so. Our contract calls for paying the T, uh, thirteen week, uh, T bill minus, uh, five basis points. So we would be seeing an interest rate of two, two and a half. Uh, so, uh, that is something that obviously will will help out. It's not helping us if we were to borrow money. Right now, refunding opportunities are not out there yet, uh, this rates have gone up. Uh, but at least on the investment side, we can try to maximize that while making sure that our investments are safe and all and and in. Investments such as, uh, USD bills and and obviously with the bank and the investment pools. Uh, any questions on the investments?
All right, thank you, Mr. Vella. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number five, which is the approval of annual subscription for library Cersei. Dynex Enterprise System, Mr. Vella.
Yes, uh.
Did I say that right?
That, yes, that's good. Sorry, but yes, I said Dynex, uh, and this is the, uh, this item is for the library. It is your enterprise system, this is the system that they use, uh, to catalog books, uh. Uh, for zero control acquisition and fund accounting. Uh, and circulation control, uh, this item, uh, is an annual item that we bring to the board for approval. Again, it is based off that the amount is over fifty thousand, so it requires board approval. Uh, it is an item that will be budgeted this coming fiscal year, uh, so, uh.
This is a renewal, correct?
It is a renewal, so the contract is from September first, twenty twenty two, to August thirty first, twenty twenty two. So all we're doing is asking for approval right now, so that as soon as the fiscal year begins, we'll have a, a contract in place or continuing.
Any questions? All right, we'll move on to, thank you, Mr. Vella, we'll move on to agenda item number six. Renewal of contract with Infrastructure Inc. for Canvas Cloud subscription, Mr. Cersei Vella.
Good afternoon, members, uh, this is, this item is also an annual, uh, not an annual, but it's a, it's a renewal. For the Canvas Cloud subscription, this is, this is the, uh, learning management system that is utilized by faculty and students. Here at the college, uh, the agreement, uh, will run from September first, twenty twenty two, through August thirty first, twenty twenty five. Uh, the first year, uh, payment will be a hundred forty two thousand three hundred ninety eight dollars and eighty cents. Uh, and again, it will be budgeted as part of the twenty twenty three budget, uh, for year two, uh, which will be, uh, twenty twenty four. The, uh, payment will be a hundred twenty nine thousand four hundred eleven and sixty cents. And for year three, uh, last year, the agreement for the renewal will be a hundred fifty six thousand nine eleven and forty cents. Uh, for a total, uh, cost for the three years of four hundred forty eight thousand seven hundred twenty one and eighty cents.
Any questions for members of the committee?
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Vella. We'll move on to agenda item number seven, approval to purchase property inventory software, Mr. Vella.
Yes, uh, well, this is item, this item, uh, again, uh, that's at the last board meeting, we brought an update to the board. Uh, we were looking at three, uh, different options, uh, to, uh, provide a proper inventory software. Uh, as you remember, it was a recommendation that was made by our auditors, uh, so that we could improve the process of keeping inventory. Uh, we reviewed and analyzed three, three software, uh. And the recommendation from staff is that we, uh, get approval from the board to purchase the Sage Premier Fix Asset Depreciation and Planning Software. Uh, and, uh, in an amount for sixty one thousand thirty eight dollars and forty six cents. Uh, we're also asking that the board approve the use of fiscal year twenty twenty two savings to cover the cost. Uh, thereafter, uh, beginning in twenty twenty four, we will be budgeting for the annual subscription. Which will be, uh, right now is twenty one thousand four seventy six ninety two, and that's a full month subscription. In addition to that, uh, there's a cost of six thousand nine hundred twenty three dollars for the server hosting, so. I know that at the last board meeting, there was a little bit of confusion whether it was cloud based or not. Uh, this this system itself, uh, through another third party provider are able to provide that as a cloud service. Uh, so the recommendation from staff is to go ahead and, uh, use the cloud version. Uh, so it includes, uh, the server, the server hosting, as well as obviously the the support. So all the patches, all the updates will be handled, uh, by the company. Uh, one time costs for this items, uh, we are purchasing, uh, eye scanners. At a cost of six thousand fifty four dollars and ninety five cents, and this will, these scanners actually have, uh, the capability of taking pictures also of. That will be uploaded into the system, uh, and includes a three year warranty for that, that those scanners, uh, the cost is four hundred sixty eight dollars. Thirteen cents, and again, this is one time cost, uh, that is part of the sixty one thousand. Uh, again, we we do have, uh, training which will be done virtually. Uh, again, one time cost, that's, uh, the total of four thousand one sixty four eighty four. And then we do have an optional server that we're currently, uh, including, and that is data conversion. Converting the data from our old system to this new system, uh, and, uh. The, uh, cost to do that is again, a one time cost of seventy thousand six seventy. Uh, adding to sixty thousand assets to be converted.
No, that is included in the sixty one thousand.
The the reason we added that, um, feature is because we know that converting current. Systems and documents over, um, tends to take much longer than than it should, just because people have day to day operational things. And if we do that, then they'll help us with the implementation and we can be off and running much faster.
Saves time and saves money. Any questions from members of the committee?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Vella. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number eight, approval of twenty twenty two. Imabeca Scholarship Regular Scholarship Matching Funds as per donor request, Mrs. Miss Sada Pampa.
Good evening, members of the board, President Ramirez, for the record, Sada Pampa, Director of Donor Relations and Special Projects. And I come before you today for your consideration for the approval of a. Scholarship match, which is requested by the Mexican government via. Scholarship match, which is requested by the Mexican government via the Inabeca Scholarship Program and the Mexican consulate. Um we have received notification that the Mexican consulate will be uh delivering seven thousand dollars to Laredo College for responsive purposes. And they are requesting a seven thousand dollar match.
And this is something that's done annually.
Annually, I I since I've been here, we've been receiving funding, but I know that this partnership has been in effect problems since like twenty two thousand nine passed. Because I know there's been like three separate Mexican temples that have been working with colleges to provide to provide.
Okay.
Any, uh chair recognizes Dr. Rameez.
I had a meeting this morning with the consul, uh he came to my office this morning to discuss the agreement. Um if approved, we're looking at Tuesday, uh August the second, or a signing of this agreement. Uh at ten o'clock in the morning, and we can do it either here in the boardroom or or wherever we we. Or whatever location of our choosing, um the idea is that we're we're gonna try to work together with a local business person. To try to increase the amount of money, if if you all recall, this item was on our uh meeting from earlier in the month. And because of the way it was worded legally, we would not be capable of. Um obtaining the additional fundings that were recorded on the agreement, and therefore made the contract. A little difficult for for us to sign, and so therefore, this Pampa went back to try to um revisit this, and uh. They're happy with the fact that we're willing to match the seven thousand, should we? Should we, should we get it approved by you all, but would like to increase that amount certainly as as quick as poss- possible, and so. This this is something that's that's been in in the pipeline.
Wonderful. Any other questions from members of the committee? Thank you, Mr. Pampa.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item number nine, approval of higher education emergency relief fund incentives, Dr. Mithra Mites and Mr. Sessarella.
Then uh board members, this item is to request that the board approve uh the use of two million. Uh for the incentive uh that uh we discussed earlier, which is to provide a new plan. Uh to students, uh we're looking at providing three hundred dollars per student. Uh we're protecting, and and this will be available for uh non-woke students, students that are coming to campus. Uh so we are are protecting that we'll have around five thousand students. Uh this uh awesome uh fall or spring semester. Uh uh three hundred, three hundred per student will be about a one foot five for that, and then we're also uh asking that the board approve a full consideration of of. An additional hundred dollars per student, and that would be to use at the bookstore or the cafe that we have currently on campus.
And so, um.
Chair recognizes Dr. Rameez.
So as we as we move forward, there there are going to be several opportunities for, I think, our students to to not only use. The money in the cafe and in the in the food um area, but also in the bookstore to try to uh encourage students to to utilize that. Um we discussed this earlier, um ideally, some of these softwares that are coming through and some of the discussions we're having. Uh to try to generate uh student life and um. Ca- a a campus climate that is conducive of a college our size on both campuses, and so we're. We're seeking your support on this.
Definitely.
Very good.
Thank you, Dr. Rameez. Thank you, Mr. Rella. All right, we'll move, can I motion for adjournment?
I have motion.
Second, any opposed? All right, it is six twenty and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.